Sorry about that Chair, we're now good to go, we've got it fixed so we can resume the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so Mr Mayfield, yes, any notes about attendance and apologies?
Yes Chair, for the benefit of the public watching, the members of the Policy Board present are yourself, Ian Fuller, the Vice Chair, in the chair for this meeting, Helen Ayers, Wendy Daden, John Gally, Marie Goldman, Simon Goldman, David Jones, Barry Knight, Rose Moore, Richard Porter, Ian Roberts, Andrew Sozin, Mike Steele, Nora Walsh, Roy Whitehead, he's here now, and Tom Willis. We've had apologies, as you say, from Graham Pooley, the Chair. Councilman Jones is substituting for him. Also had apologies from Neil Gulliver, for whom Mike Steele is standing in, and we've had apologies from Nicolette Chambers. The other members present are the Cabinet Member for Sustainable Development, Mike McGrawery, Leader of the Council, Stephen Robinson, Jeanette Potter, Anne Davidson, and Richard Hyland. The officers present are Keith Nicholson, the Director of Public Places, David Green, the Director of Sustainable Communities, and from the Planning Policy Team, Jeremy Potter, Claire Stuckey, Liz Harris-Best, and Kirsty Dougal. I think that's everybody, if I've missed anybody off our apologies Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, can I just say that if Councilman Potter would like to substitute for Councilor Chambers, that would solve a problem. If she's listening. Or maybe not.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, okay, is that okay then, Chairman?
Yes, I'm happy with that.
Thank you, thank you Jeanette, I'll just go away.
Okay, item two, are there any declarations of interest? No, thank you. The minutes of the last two meetings, and does anybody have any comments about those minutes? Okay, we'll accept those as being satisfactory then, thank you very much. Mr Mayfield, I don't believe there are any public questions, is that correct?
That's correct Chair, no questions.
Okay then, let's move on to item five then, the Consultation Response to the Government's Planning White Paper. And I hand over to Mr Potter.
Thank you, thank you very much Chair, and good evening Policy Board and other members and members of the public. So I'm Jeremy Potter, I'm the Spatial Planning Services Manager, as Mr Mayfield said. And essentially this item is looking at two elements of the government's planning reforms, a white paper and a technical consultation looking at changes to the existing system. So that consultation, the latter, the consultation period finished today, and therefore that's been sent off. But we will be referring to that. And then we have the white paper which is much more about the substantive changes that the government are proposing as part of, some fairly wide-ranging planning reforms. And I think it's probably important to say at this beginning here that it's very likely that there's going to be further consultations that's been from this going forward into probably next year. So what you'll have tonight Chair is a presentation, because of the wide-ranging nature of it, you've got a presentation for the three of us. And so Claire, Kirsty, and Liz are going to go through the main elements of the white paper and also touch upon the technical consultation that I referred to. There were 26 questions to this consultation, and we provided officers of draft here some detailed... Obviously, this is the opportunity for the Policy Board to debate those. So I'm going to hand over to Claire Stuckey, who will provide with the first element of the presentation, and then we'll work through that. And then we get to a point where we can put the recommendation to the board, thank you Claire.
Thank you Jeremy, and good evening everybody, good evening members. So I'm Claire Stuckey, and I'm a Principal Planner within the Local Plans Team, and we'll start this joint presentation. So as Jeremy has already pointed out, in August the government published two consultations, one on the Planning White Paper, which sets out fundamental changes to the future of the planning system, and then a further technical consultation which proposes four shorter-term measures to improve the immediate effectiveness of the planning system. And together these reforms are proposed to create a significantly simpler, faster, a more predictable planning system to deliver essentially more homes that the country needs. And as Jeremy's touched on, over the course of the next 10-15 minutes, would outline the potential implications of the proposed changes for the city, provide a summary of the Consultation Response to the White Paper, which is also Appendix One of your covering reports, a summary of the technical consultation, and a summary of the response which is on your green sheet. So starting with the white paper itself, the introduction to the white paper sets out how the planning system is central to tackling some of the important national challenges the country faces. But it argues that it's been hindered by what it sees as a series of fundamental problems, including that it's too complex and it takes too long to adopt a local plan. So the white paper proposes to tackle these problems, and it structures its proposals around three main pillars and 24 separate proposals, with the consultation due to finish later on this month. So taking pillar one first of all, this sets out key proposals relevant to land use planning and advocates streamlining the preparation and examination of local plans. Some of the key proposals include zoning of land into three different categories, growth areas which would be suitable for substantial development such as new settlements, and they would be granted outline permission on adoption of the local plan. Renewal areas would be suitable for development largely on urban and brownfield sites and would be permitted either through a prior approval process, a faster planning application process, or local development order. And then the third category is referred to as protected areas, where development would continue to be restricted, such as in the Green Belt Conservation Areas and Wildlife Sites. So as plan making would primarily focus on identifying areas for development and protection, the white paper proposes removing the general development management policies to national policy to create more short-term focused plans. It also proposes replacing the current tests of soundness with a single statutory sustainable development test which would consider whether the plan contributes to achieving sustainable development in accordance with national policy. It proposes reduce frames of public consultation on the local plan, with one taking place very early on, on where development should go and what it should look like, and then again once the local plan has been submitted for examination. It advocates removing the current duty to cooperate test, having a simpler sustainability appraisal process, but essentially one that would still continue to satisfy the requirements of UK and international law. It further proposes new requirements for plans to be more visual, map-based, to follow a national standard template, and to be based on the latest digital technology. Amendments, it also proposed to the standard method for establishing housing requirement figures to distribute the government's National Housebuilding Target of 300,000 new homes annually. And then a final key proposal I wanted to mention is the introduction of a statutory duty to adopt the new style plan within 30 months of the new legislation coming into force, or 42 months the councils with the recently adopted plans such as Chelmsford. Before I hand on to my colleague to talk about pillar two and pillar three, would just say that officers were intending to bring a report to the board on its local development scheme, to set out and to agree a timetable for a review of the local plan, but given the proposed changes outlined in the white paper and further government consultations on planning reform expected over the next six, 12 months, we feel that we should pause on that for now until we have greater certainty on future requirements. It also means that we can take into account the implications arising from any local government reform. Thank you.
Thanks Claire, good evening everyone, I'm Kirsty Dougal, I'm a Senior Planning Officer. Picking up then on pillar two of the white paper, and this is for planning for beautiful and sustainable places. And this contains proposals relating to improving design and sustainability. The white paper proposes firstly that the recommendations of the Building Better, Building Beautiful Commission from 2019 should be implemented. There is a strong emphasis on using design codes with model, pattern books, and parameters which reflect local character and community preferences. The white paper sets out that a national model design code will be published this autumn, and this will set out detailed parameters for development in different types of locations. The national design code is then proposed to be supplemented by local design codes which will be developed through robust public engagement and reflects what is popular locally. The white paper proposes that the local design codes should only be given weight in the planning process where they have been prepared with effective inputs from the local community. The white paper proposes a shift in emphasis, and this would be to focus on net gains for the quality of the built environment and the natural environment. And this moves away from the approach of no net harm. There's a recognition within the white paper that the proposals may require a step change in design skills, prioritisation, and leadership within councils. One of the proposals is for each local authority to have a Chief Officer for Design and Placemaking. And the final key proposal in pillar two is a new fast-track for beauty process whereby proposals that comply with pre-established good design principles informed by community preferences would be expediated through the planning process. In addition to fast-tracking beautiful development, the same principle should also apply to zero-carbon development. This would include a change to the National Planning Policy Framework, the use of local design guides, design codes, master plans, site-specific design codes for growth areas, and as well as expanded permitted development rights. Claire, if you could switch slides please, great. So moving on to pillar three, this is related to planning for infrastructure and connected places, and this focuses on streamlining developer obligations and contributions. The white paper proposes that the current method of Section 106 agreements and the Community Infrastructure Levy regime will be consolidated into one infrastructure levy. There would still be an option of continuing in-kind onsite delivery of affordable housing, but it's not clear in the white paper how this would work or whether it would also apply to other types of infrastructure. The national levy would be based on the principle of capturing a proportion of land value uplift to fund infrastructure and affordable housing. It would be based on a flat rate set nationally at either a single rate or an area-specific rate, and it would be charged on the final value of the development. The white paper proposes that the levy would be collected at the point of occupation of the development, which is a change to the system that we have at the moment in terms of the Community Infrastructure Levy regime. And it would also be a value, there would also be a value-based minimum threshold. So below that threshold, the levy is not charged, and it would only be charged on the proportion of the value that exceeds that threshold. Flip to the next slide please, thank you. So members, you will have already seen our proposed Consultation Response, attached to Appendix One of the reports. Overall, our view is that the proposals within the Planning for the Future White Paper are wide-ranging and they could have a significant impact on councils. For local plans, we welcome a more simplified approach, but zoning might be an oversimplification. Last officers welcome the designation of protected areas and that these would be subject to tighter development management controls. The Consultation Response raises concerns about how the simplified zoning would affect the natural environment and what provisions would be in place to ensure that wildlife habitats and species would be protected when they're outside of these protected areas or where species migrate across different areas. There's also a lack of detail on what might actually constitute a protected area and whether in these areas no new development would be allowed at all, or whether, for example, under the current system, some development might be permitted, which is the approach that we have, for example, in the Green Belt at the moment. The Consultation Response raises concerns about how proposals for the single sustainability test for local plans, and whether it's an effective replacement if an effective replacement is not brought in. Although officers consider that the sustainability appraisal and strategic environmental assessment local plan process has become very unwieldy, it is a useful tool in establishing not just environmental but social and economic acceptability of the plan's proposed approach. As such, officers would support a simpler, more effective sustainability appraisal approach or process being retained within the proposed single statutory test, and also that adequate consideration is given to the achievement of net gains as set out in the Environment Bill. Resourcing the accelerated production of plans and the implications of proposed changes and uncertainties around the short-term and standard methods for calculating housing numbers are also going to be key issues. The proposals in pillar two relating to design and sustainability are, again, welcomed in principle. However, officers have raised concerns in the Consultation Response about the detail of the proposals and how the principles will be drawn out in practice. Also, beauty seems to be a very subjective word or consideration which could be difficult to quantify in decision-making. And similarly to proposals relating to local plans, resourcing especially for the proposed Chief Officer for Design and Placemaking are of concern. Officers have significant concerns about the proposals within pillar three relating to planning for infrastructure. The proposals fundamentally shift the risk of delivering infrastructure to councils rather than it being on developers. And again, the level of detail needed to fully understand the proposals and how they would be implemented isn't included within the white paper. Overall, officers' view is that the basic principles behind the proposals within the white paper, such as simplifying plan making, speeding up the whole planning process, those principles are sound, but the details of the proposed processes, implementation, practice, those issues are critical and they're not within the white paper. So therefore, you'll see within our Consultation Response proposed that the officers have drawn out these concerns for further consideration. And I'll now pass over, thank you very much.
Good evening members, Liz Harris-Best from the Planning Policy Team. Doing the final part of this presentation, just focusing on the other consultation which is the technical one that accompanied the white paper which sets out the four shorter-term measures intended to improve the immediate effectiveness of the current planning system. And those measures cover four main proposals which include changes to the standard method for assessing local housing need, securing first homes sold at a discount from market price for first-time buyers through developer contributions, temporarily lifting the small-site threshold below which developers do not need to contribute to affordable housing to up to 40 or 50 units to support SME builders, and extending the current permission in principle to major development. So I'll just take those in turn if Claire could just, thank you, move on to the next slide. So this is sort of the proposed changes to the standard method are also covered in the white paper, but with less detail. But what's set out in the technical paper is effectively an algorithm which provides the most significant impact to Chelmsford in terms of an adjustment to the market signals in the algorithm using workplace-to-medium house price earnings ratios. Previously, or what's in the existing calculation is a one-part affordability adjustment which produces the current standard method figure that you can see in the table in the presentation. What the government is proposing is to introduce a second new adjustment which is aimed at giving greater overall emphasis on affordability because it's factoring in affordability changes over a 10-year period. Effectively, the impact of this two-stage adjustment is significant in Chelmsford as it almost doubles the affordability ratio from the current standard method. And the consequence is that it raises the annual figure from what the existing standard method figure of 9.46 dwellings per annum to 1,558 dwellings per annum, which is the output of the proposed new figure and is also forms part of the drive, as was mentioned earlier, to deliver 300,000 new homes per annum nationally. The proposed new standard method also doesn't have a cap applied to limit the level of the increase for individual local authorities, as is currently the case. So that's another significant change that's being proposed at the moment. Claire, if we could move on to the next slide please. So one of the other proposed changes is to the introduction of first homes. The government consulted on its first homes proposals in February 2019, and this included a consultation around both the design of the first home scheme and changes to the planning system to support its delivery. And the government's sort of published its response to this consultation and is now, through this technical paper, seeking views on proposed changes to the current planning system to facilitate the delivery of this product. So the consultation is proposing that first homes should be sold at a minimum discount of 30% for market price, and local authorities will have discretion to increase that discount to 40 or 50%, but this would need to be evidenced in the local plan making process. The requirement is to provide 25% of units as first homes, sorry, affordable units as first homes, and that requirement remains the same regardless of the discount from market price. The separate Consultation Response on first homes states that they will be subject to a price cap of 250,000 outside London, and local planning authorities will be able to set lower caps for the first three months of the sale where there's evidence of local need, and this is determined through the plan making process. And they will also, first homes would also be subject to an income cap of 80,000 across England with the same flexibility as to set this lower for three months, again, if it's tested through the plan making process. The government incends to set out in policy that a minimum of 25% of all affordable housing units secured through developer contributions should be first homes, and this will be a national threshold set out in planning policy. Initially, these will be secured obviously through Section 106 planning obligations, but under the proposed reforms that you heard earlier that are proposed in the white paper, these would subsequently be secured through the extended infrastructure levy. The consultation states that first homes should replace as a priority other forms of affordable home ownership products as defined in the National Planning Policy Framework, prioritising the replacement of those tenures which secure the smallest discount from market price. So in Chelmsford, this would mean a compliant application would deliver 9% of the total housing would be first homes, 4% would be shared ownership, and 22% would be affordable housing for rent still, and the remainder obviously would be market housing. The implication is that first homes will be delivered by developers direct and not by registered providers, and this could have an administrative burden on the local authority, especially if we were to seek to apply local priority categories. And registered providers would obviously then have a much reduced role in the intermediate market, and many registered providers do use stair casing receipts from shared ownership housing in their investment in new homes. So their ability to invest in new homes generally could be cut back in future. The government proposes also to replace the existing entry-level exception site policy with the first home, our first homes exception site policy, which they are also proposing some amendments to that policy. Sorry Claire, if we could just move to the next slide, thank you. So one of the other key proposals the government is putting forward is to effectively, another element to reducing the burden of planning contributions on SMEs is for more sites, is to reduce the planning contribution burdens on them for a time-limited period. National policy currently sets out that affordable housing contributions should not be sought for developments of fewer than 10 units. And this approach was introduced through a ministerial statement in 2014 and was later embedded in the revised MPPF in 2018. And so what the government is proposing is that through this consultation is that raising the, potentially raising the threshold for affordable housing contributions to up to 40 or 50 units. In designated rural areas, the government proposes to maintain the lower threshold of five units or fewer. But Chelmsford doesn't actually have any of the designations that fall under this particular designation that allows the ability to still seek affordable housing on a threshold of five units or fewer. If taken forward, this proposal would be introduced again through a written ministerial statement in the autumn. We've had a look at our housing land supply for the next five years and the impact that this could have, and it wasn't perhaps as dramatic as we'd initially feared. And we were looking at potentially a loss of about 13 affordable housing units over the next five years. And there was no difference whether the threshold was Um and there was no difference whether the threshold was set at forty or fifty units. Um and then we also looked back over windfall sites completions, even though we wouldn't have had um the ability to seek affordable housing on a threshold of eleven units looking backwards. We've done an exercise to do that just to see what the impact might be. And excluding office to residential conversions and care home developments, which would have been exempt anyway from affordable housing contributions currently. The affordable housing, the average number of affordable housings that we've, we estimate that we would lose is is average about ten per annum. So this, but this proposed change would mean that there would not be any new commuter sums in lieu of onsite affordable housing contributions for developments between the eleven and fifteen dwellings that the new plan currently allows for, which we were looking to facilitate to try and assist with delivering more temporary housing solutions or more targeted housing solutions to assist those who are currently in temporary accommodation um and and are homeless or we have a statutory duty towards. And of course, there would be no benefit um from the proposed reform uh in the in the in the infrastructure levy, they're proposing to um include uh an affordable housing obligation in the future on office to residential permitted development rights. And um that, you know, that that would be negated by this change because um a lot of um our office to residential um conversions uh happen around that forty to fifty threshold. So we feel like whatever um advantage there might be in affordable housing terms by that change in the future would be negated obviously by this this change in policy. Sorry, if I could just have the last slide, Claire. So the final proposal the government is looking at is to remove the restriction in the current permission in principle regulations on major development. The aim of this change is just to speed up the consent process and again to help um or perceived to help SME developers. So the permission in principle consent followed by a technical details consent approach, it already exists for brownfield sites and some smaller sites. Um so the government is just um seeking to enable it to happen um on major development. Um existing restrictions in permission in prin- in principal regulations relating to um EIA and habitat requirements would remain. So this means permission in principle by applications will not in practice be a re- a route to permission for sites for large sites capable of delivering more than a hundred and fifty dwellings or more than five hectares. Um save where there was a screening opinion had been obtained and it was concluded that it was not EIA development. And similarly, permission in principle will not be suitable for sites where applying the Conservation of Species and Habitat Regulations, the two thousand and seventeen regulations, there's a probability or risk that a project is likely to have significant effect on European sites. Unless an application was accompanied by an appropriate assessment demonstrating there was unlikely to be significant impact on the site. So an appropriate assessment is actually likely to apply to most of Essex due to the recently adopted strategic approach um agreed um to address the impact of development on the protected wildlife sites on the Essex coast. So um the impact in Chelmsford of this proposed change could could actually be um relatively small in terms of it potentially not not applying because of those um because of the Rams SPD effectively. On to um the uh slide thirteen, it's just to reinforce then or to point members in the direction of the green sheet, which has um the resp- are the responses that have been sent. Um because the consultation um response deadline was today, therefore the Director for Sustainable Communities in consultation with the Cabinet Member for Sustainable Development has submitted the City Council's response to this consultation as is set out on that um green sheet. And so just directing members um to that for this moment. And then finally, um I would just like to um take members back to the recommendation in the covering report relating to the White Paper and the recommendation that is obviously set out in the report that the board consider the consultation response to the planning for the future White Paper set out in Appendix One. Um and it is to provide feedback to enable the Director of Sustainable Communities in consultation with the Cabinet Member for Sustainable Development to finalize the response before submitting it to the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government before the consultation period expires on the twenty ninth of October two thousand and twenty. Thank you.
Thank you very much to all the officers. We fully appreciate just how much work this uh White Paper has generated. And we do thank you for all the hard work you've put into this. Uh and we do note uh the responses, the consultation responses that have been written. And now we come in the meeting as an opportunity just to reflect upon those responses and whether as a board we wish to uh make uh any of those responses a bit more robust or change them in in some way uh to reflect uh how we're feeling about this White Paper. Uh and just to sort of set the tone for that then, um I'm just going to call upon councillor Goldman, Marie Goldman, to uh put forward some proposed recommendations.
Thank you, Chair. Um and 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 thank you everybody for those presentations and thank you for everybody for joining, to everybody for joining us this evening. Um before I start, um I know there might be some members of the public watching this evening. What we're going to try to do as a council is to introduce ourselves a bit a bit more um and explain to people who might be watching, um who might not be familiar with council proceedings, just exactly who we are and and what we're doing at any particular moment in time. So um we're all going to try and do that a bit more and I'm going to kind of jump the gun and do a bit a bit before everybody else has kind of got to grips with that. Um so my name is councillor Marie Goldman. I am the Deputy Leader of Chelmsford City Council and I'm a man, I'm a member of this uh policy board. Um I'm also the Cabinet Member for Connected Chelmsford. Um and um and one of the if you're following this along, you would have been probably to our website and followed the link on the website to watch this. Um and you hopefully will have looked at the agenda papers. And if you downloaded the agenda papers um a day or two ago, then you might be going, why on earth are they talking about this green sheet? What on earth does that mean? Um well, a green sheet, um just to explain it, is a list of um last minute alterations and possible additions to the to the agenda. And if you go back to the website, if you haven't seen it already, there is another link there now, which is to down, which you can download that green sheet. Um doesn't look very green when you download it, but if we were in the council chamber in normal pre-COVID times, it would indeed be printed on green paper. Um so that to distinguish it from the from the other papers. Um and and it's just a um a and it's just a PDF, so you can you can have a look at that. So what we're proposing, what we're proposing now, and it was alluded to um just now by Liz Harris Best. Um uh is that there have been prepared responses by the officers to this consultation on planning for the future. Um but actually, um there are um, there is a proposal um from from the administration that actually we'd like to beef up some of those responses because we we think that actually this is um that we have serious concerns about this uh planning for the future um White Paper. And we'd like to make it abundantly clear to the government that we're really actually not very happy with them. Um and there are um a whole list of items that we that we'd like to um beef up and um they're listed A to G on this so called green paper. So if you can download that, then have a look. Um I'm probably not going to read them all out um individually. But I but I'd also like to say that I, along with other members, have been contacted by members of the public and that's fantastic. Do get in contact with us and tell us your views. That's exactly what we're here for. We're supposed to, you know, represent and your views to back to the back to the council and and, you know, make sure that we're we're taking your views into account. And so um I I promised a member of the public who wasn't able to attend this evening um that I would present her views. Um and and I think that fits in very nicely because her 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 views are um basically along the same sort of lines as what these proposals are saying. And she says that, this is from Alison um in Chelmsford, and she says, I support the Wildlife Trust view that um as they stand, the current proposals for reform in England set out in the planning White Paper will not lead to a system fit for the future. Instead, these reforms could increase nature's decline, fail to integrate nature into people's lives and undermine the democratic process for local decision making. Now Alison, I hope you'll forgive me that I'm not going to read out the the whole of um the email that you sent me, but thank you very much for getting in contact. But I think um that outlines just some of the concerns that that we share here. Um and I hope other members will will share those concerns with with me and indeed with other members of of the board. Um so we've listed out on the green sheets, um which I'm just going to bring up in front of me, so I'm not looking to the side. Um uh A to A to G, um so starting off with with A, reducing with um the proposed consultation responses should be, we're proposing they should be amended to reflect and emphasize the concerns that the proposal proposals in the White Paper will reduce public engagement, something that we don't want to do. We don't want to reduce public engagement um and consultation in the production of local plans. Local plans are about where you live. Um and they're about the environment that you live in and what's going to happen to it. And we think they're really important and we think it's really important that the public um is able to um engage in them. And we think that these white, this White Paper will reduce public engagement and consultation in the production of local plans and produce or remove the rightful residence to um object to subsequent planning applications near them. That's not what we want. And we want to make it very, very clear to the government that we do not support that. Um point B is that we're grant automatic, the the White Paper will grant automatic planning permission for developers to build on land identified as for growth. Um again, not something that we want. And then um various other things um which uh have have already been outlined by officers in their presentation. But one thing that I know that my colleague um councillor Rose Moore is going to, like, I believe that she'll be speaking on in a minute, and she's absolutely right. The uh along with Alison's concerns, there is a a quite breathtaking lack of um concern for the environment um in the government's White Paper and any reference to it really. Um and we certainly think that we um that that for that um more detail should be put in there and certainly that we want to strengthen our response to that. So um so yes, I'll leave it to other members to come in before I um go on too much, but um I, yes, um thank you very much, Chair. I hope that kind of sets the scene for um for further discussion.
Okay, thank you very much. Um any comments on those recommendations? I've got councillor Andrew Soshin has indicated desire to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um my basic problem with the response is that it has been developed to improve this uh to commend the simplification and efficiency. And this is largely done at the expense of community involvement. So I've gone through all of the um the twenty five uh responses um and proposed some amendments, which I will go through. Um if you want to share that, well, it's on a Word document that uh some people will have seen. Now, um the I I propose that these are looked at, this is going to the director of the uh the the Directorate and it's also going to the Cabinet Member. And that if they could be considered um uh uh to amend the recommendations. And I'm just going to go through quickly the uh the response sample on, the starting on question five suggests that it's changed to read overall the
Councillor Soshin.
Yes.
I'll just give you to pause for a moment.
Um okay.
Can we just restrict ourselves to the Green Paper at the moment? Um any comments specifically about the Green Paper recommendations? I don't want to get, at this stage, I don't want to get down into the details for each question. I just, in general principle, are people in favor with the 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 points that have been made in the Green Paper?
Chairman, will that mean I'll be able to come back on this so um
Of course.
To a later stage.
Of course, yes.
So I mean, obviously, I'm supportive of what's on the Green Paper.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, so just in terms of commenting on the group, the uh the proposals put on, the recommendations on the Green Paper, the A to G and and I don't know whether councillor Goldman, you're going to adjust the lot, the final recommendations or not, but just on the Green Paper then, uh councillor Roberts.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. It's only a very small point. I mean, I think that the the points on the Green Paper are well are well deserved. Um the the question I have is is there's nothing in in there about how you get builders or developers to actually develop the land because we we all know about developers building up landbanks and such like that. Uh you know, they get planning permission and they disappear for five years. So trying to get fifteen hundred houses in, I think, and I just wonder whether there's anywhere we could stick a comment in about, is there going to be any penalties for developers who do not produce the goods that they're supposed to? And one final point, in the in the, on the Green Paper, it says towards the end of it, it says that parish councils, could I ask that town and parish councils be included in the final document? Because there is a town in, believe it or not, I'm not going to mention the name because everybody laughs. So if you could do that, thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh I believe councillor Marie Goldman just wants to come back in quickly.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um and it was uh apologies, I should have um, I should have uh come, I should have mentioned it earlier, actually. I was because on the second page of the of the green sheet. Um and so obviously we have the the amendments that we want to, that we'd like to propose on the first page, but on the top of the second page, there were some um some uh other other items, other issues that we'd like to um suggest. So um in particular regarding the Members of Parliament who cover the the Chelmsford area. Um and um um I I'm very grateful to the leader of the opposition, councillor Roy Whitehead, for suggesting some some further changes to what's been proposed in the Green Sheet. Um so even late, even um late additions in green sheets can still be changed. Um and um we've discussed it within our group and we actually think that the the suggestions that councillor Whitehead has made are very sensible ones. Um i- in particular, he's talking about um where it says on the green sheet that the three Members of Parliament for Chelmsford be urged to oppose these proposals in the White Paper about which the council has has concerns and their responses be circulated to members. He's he suggested that this is imprecise and I think I think he's right, actually. I think we do need to be a bit more precise about that. So he has suggested some alternative wording, which I'm going to read out now if you're um, if you'll indulge me. Um he says the, this policy board suggests the wording, which says this policy board resolves to instruct the chief executive and leader of the city council to write to our three Members of Parliament um setting out the council's reservations and concerns about the proposals in the White Paper and ask them to express those concerns to the Secretary of State for Housing and Local Government and their capacity as local members. It further resolves to remind all Members of the City Council of the need to respond to the consultation individually and recommends that they copy their responses to our three Members of Parliament so that they may be aware of the concerns of the City Council. Um now, I I certainly have no issues with that and I'd like to propose that that is um adopted as well. And if I may, I'd just like to make a suggestion. Um I I think it should be um in the interest of expediency, um we all, there is always a lot to say on these things. Um but I don't think it would be helpful to go through line by line of the changes that want, that would need to be made to the consultation response. I think it would be appropriate, um more appropriate for the the changes to be agreed um out of this, out of this meeting um between um or certainly with the um the Cabinet, with Cabinet Member councillor Mike McCrory. Um and um and then agreed obviously with um uh officers as well and obviously circulated to the um uh opposition as well. Um I think that would um probably be be the best use of everyone's time and I completely appreciate um councillor Soshin's um efforts in that and I very much like him to contribute to that. But I I believe it's probably not in the board's best interest if we go through everything line by line. Maybe a couple of examples this evening, but but probably not every single line I would suggest would be the best way to go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh councillor Porter, Porter.
Thank you, Chairman. Um I have some concerns are set out by the officers and I share those concerns. Um generally speaking, I'm in favor of what's actually set out in the White Paper. And I agree with ca- with um with the comments that um we adopt the proposals are set out in the Green Paper. But one point which hasn't adequately been covered, whether in the Green Paper or elsewhere, relates to the number of houses that are proposed to be built. The increase is from nine hundred and forty six to fifteen hundred and fifty eight. It's not evidence based, it's based on an algorithm, which I don't have a great deal of confidence. So far as the the White Paper itself and the building of houses is concerned, I don't regard it as a pressing issue, nor one that needs to be dealt with by government at the moment. Currently, there are about a hundred, sorry, one million ha- planning permissions for homes which haven't been built. On the basis of three hundred thousand per year, which is the government's target, that gives us a supply for new homes of three years. So to talk now about target, that gives us a supply for new homes of three years. So to talk now about a need to build further homes as set out in the White Paper is fine in principle, but it doesn't need to be done yet. There's time to digest all the comments and to produce something that is more akin to the needs of each individual authority. To impose a limit or a target which is way beyond what we have at the moment does not seem to me to be entirely satisfactory. I have one other point, but it's more in the nature of the question relating to SIL. Presently, 15% of the money that we receive on SIL goes to parish councils in parish areas. I can't find anything in the White Paper that deals with this at all, and I'd be grateful for officers' comments on that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, officers will note your comments there. Mr. Porter, do you wish to comment on that last point?
Yes, thank you. My understanding, and I may be wrong, and Mrs. Harris Best might be able to help me with this, but I think there is a reference in the White Paper that does talk about the community proportion still being available for local groups or local neighbourhood groups. But we can clarify, we'd be able to clarify that. I don't think it's explicit, but I think there is a reference.
Okay. Do you want to come back on that, councillor Porter, or?
No, thank you. Thank you very much, Chair.
Okay, next councillor Moore.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you too to councillor Roberts and councillor Porter for your remarks. I had read up on this. In the year to June 2019, 377,000 residential planning consents were granted across England. And if those consents were all turned into homes, we'd have just short of 2 million houses in the next five years. But that isn't happening. There are two reasons for that. There are incentives that encourage landowners and site promoters to benefit from increasing their land values rather than building the homes. And within that, almost 60% of all residential planning permissions are held by non-builders. So those sites are just sold on. So there's definitely a problem with permissions not coming forward and being built. So we have to address that, and that would be, I imagine, a legislative change. In response to the Green Paper, I wholeheartedly support these, and I would like to speak further to the point F, which is watering down the importance of environmental assessments and not sufficiently taking into consideration the provisions in the Climate Change Act of 2008 that address carbon dioxide emission standards for future housing stock. There seems to be throughout this, the two papers, a denial of the climate and ecological crisis. And the government itself has said on several occasions that this must be addressed, and we indeed will have zero carbon target of 2050. Recent progress on climate change has been in spite of, not because of national policies, and we cannot go on with business as usual. With regard to the natural environment and protected areas and zoning, conservation and protection of the Green Belt and special sites is very important, but it's not enough. We need to enhance the existing habitats we have, including those on areas identified as brownfields, and create new habitats in the form of wildlife corridors in all zones that actively support and boost biodiversity and native species. These schemes have to be woven into the fabric of new communities and established ahead of development, with measures in place to support and protect transient and migrating wildlife. Our supplementary planning documents are making places documents within the local plan framework. We have reassured me that we are committed to this. However, if it goes above our heads at national level and we are not seeing leadership from the very top of government on this, then I do worry that our policies will not be carried forward by developers. And thirdly, the decarbonisation of our buildings. Zero carbon homes are essential, and this needs to be recognised now, and it has to be embedded in future planning legislation. Given the fact that climate change is attributable to human activity and the grim projections for global temperature and rising sea levels, it is unthinkable that developers would pursue the business as usual approach. If we fail to deliver on this and we have to retrofit new homes built within the next 10 to 15 years, that would be hugely expensive and wasteful, with government using public money to have to establish and administrate grant funding. Let's invest money now to ensure delivery of climate resilient, zero carbon homes and commercial buildings. There are other points here, but I know other members wish to speak. I would just like to say we cannot retrofit our infrastructure, and it's vital to have public and active transport links that cut car dependency outline from the earliest stage. We need to work with highways on this too. Master planning is the process that we use locally, where also communities can be involved. And this is a very important part of the process, and we cannot lose that level of community engagement in the planning process. And so I would like to pass on to other members, but just to say, we do consider the environment at every level. It should be the heart of policymaking here and at the highest levels of government. And as councillor Goldman has, I've also received several pieces of correspondence in the last few days specifically around the threat to our natural environment. And I wholeheartedly support those residents, and I will continue to fight nature's corner and speak for nature because it cannot speak for itself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So again, still on the White Paper, councillor Daden, is your comment on the Green Paper, sorry?
It was picking up councillor Moore's point, actually, and councillor Roberts about land banking. So, kind of.
Okay.
May I? It seems that sort of the change in planning policy is that authorities that are not delivering houses. And do we feel that the government are mindful that this is often due to the developer hanging on to land and land banking, as councillor Moore alluded to? And I couldn't see anything in there for penalties for actually doing this. Is that something that we could possibly empower local authorities to deliver penalties going forward? And if we're going to lose finance from the SIL money, maybe the penalties for land banking, we could recoup. So if we're talking about zoning and we do it in a more sort of general area, that there is flexibility, which site will actually deliver the development? If you've only got five years to develop your development before it's either permission is revoked and we look to somebody else, or we impose penalties on them, it might help the cost of houses coming forward and make them generally more affordable. But I think there's nothing like the fear of losing that permission to give you focus. And the paper is a little bit about simplifying planning. I don't know whether it would complicate it if local plans could work with parish councils more so that we didn't need neighbourhood plans, that there was more a collaborative work ethic. I know for some of the public, it comes a bit confusing. Our parish council did an amazing job at delivering a really good neighbourhood plan, but it came just after the local plan. And I think there was a, what's this all about? We've just done it. So I don't know how officers feel about that, that if the simplifying of a local plan gives them some time, that they could actually work closer with parishes and just make one plan rather than lots. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Porter, do you want to respond to anything there?
Just very, very briefly, Chair, if you would. I mean, the land banking issue is one that officers have been grappling with for a long time. I mean, I've always thought that reducing the time limit on a planning permission from, you know, maybe three to two years would help. And also, not being able to keep planning permission live by digging a trench or a practical commencement and keeping that live. You know, there's some legislative changes that could be made to ensure that developers do actually develop. And, you know, the penalties, there could be situations where if you don't actually go through that process, then maybe you have an embargo on that site for a period of time where we're not allowed to give you, you know, grant planning permission on that time because you didn't deliver it in the time that you said you were going to. So there are ways in which discussions that have been had around that. On the second point about neighbourhood plans and the local plan, I think, yeah, I mean, we have been working really hard. Jenny Robinson in my team works with all the neighbourhood plan groups, and, you know, we really want to try and integrate those as best we can. I think neighbourhood planning is good in another way because it builds that kind of local capacity into the system and interest in the system, and it's a community-led plan. So in some ways, I understand what councillor Daden was saying, but I think a collaborative approach would be one that would be really good going forward. It's just aligning the timetables and aligning the groups because obviously these groups are volunteers. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Don't know whether Liz Harris Best wants to elaborate your comment or not. You put in the chat box?
Sorry, Chair, I was just responding to councillor Porter's query about the infrastructure, the current share that goes to the 25% of the levy that's spent on priorities in the area that the development has occurred in. And so I was just pointing to the actual proposal, because I think he mentioned that he was struggling to find that. So I was just trying to highlight that it's proposal 22 of the White Paper that sets out the intention to just maintain that the neighbourhood share carries forward in the same way, well, under the same measure, as I should say, under a reformed infrastructure levy, sorry, if that wasn't clear. I just wanted to point to the exact part of the White Paper where that's mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Back to you then, councillor Porter.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Liz, for pointing that out for me. What I really wanted to do was to come back on the point of why builders don't build. And I'm quoting from a publication here. It says, "In 2018, the government's let win review found that the main driver of lack of supply and slow construction rates isn't the planning system, but the market absorption rate, that is, the rate at which new houses can be built and sold without bringing down local prices, and thus reducing the incentive for builders to build. House builders build homes at the rate that they can sell them." There doesn't appear to be anything in these proposals that breaks that relationship. So if we flood the market, then the supply and demand actually gets changed. So that's why, as I understand it, builders aren't building. They're building up the landbank, and when the need is there, then they build the houses. Without the need, they don't build the houses. They sit on the land and it increases in price. What I think government needs to do is to address that problem. And perhaps when we respond on the Green Paper, we should draw government's attention to its own let win report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I know certainly at Springfield Parish Council, the concern was expressed that land values would be, you know, a key element to this and would lead to sort of more building in areas where the land value was greater. So it's a big concern. Councillor Sosin?
Thank you, Chair. In my response, a couple of people have asked, my response to question 14, really, in response to what both councillor Roberts and councillor Daden has been speaking, to add a point, we need to propose some action for failure to build out, like reallocating the site to another developer, especially a small builder. So that's a suggested addition to that point. The point now that councillor Porter was about the national levy, last question, without section 106 and SIL, my point would eliminate local community centres, other new facilities in the area, NHS facilities, and local road improvement. It all goes to national projects, such as Bradwell Power Station. Having done those two points, I could just do a couple of other ones, which may be by way of question. On question five, Chairman, permission in principle would allow developers to build properties of sizes that suit themselves rather than the identified needs in the housing assessment studies. Now, the officers may say that's perhaps it's not quite true. And again, it was question eight. This is councillor Porter's point. Add in the comments, developers build at relatively low rates to maintain house prices. The ability to build at higher rates is also affected by the shortage of skilled workers. And we saw in the news, a request to allow immigrants in these categories were short. So that was a request, that was, sorry, the response to councillor Porter, that he was the point he was making. So if you add that point into 8B, and then on 22D, this is the other one that I'm particularly concerned, "When the money infrastructure is only forthcoming at the end of development, it is only too easy for the developer to walk away, in some cases, winding up a development company, and it's very difficult and impossible to obtain the funds for the infrastructure." My colleague parish councillor Keith Ronaldson has experience in Norfolk, where a developer just walked away providing infrastructure they were supposed to provide under the section 106. So those are the three points there are. I'm quite willing for this to be shared with everybody else who's making comments, but it's just for the consideration by officers and the Cabinet member, these points I've made on this sheet. But they have, of course, also covered points made by other councillors in response to the debate so far. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So hopefully, officers could note this idea that as a board, we're sort of concerned that developers' interests sometimes are sort of perhaps overriding local communities, and are concerned that, you know, maybe the developers are perhaps not being held to account, or could not be held to account as much as they are at the moment. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Yeah, councillor Sosin raises some, you know, interesting points there, especially in relation to the timing of the infrastructure levy. And I think if one thing we were wanting to get across to members tonight is that the infrastructure changes that are proposed in the White Paper are fundamental, and we feel are really, essentially threaten the ability of the council to deliver infrastructure or the development to deliver infrastructure in commensurate with the build-out of the actual development. Getting an unspecified amount of money in the future doesn't do the job. All the risk goes on to the council to either borrow, to forward fund, on something that we don't know how much we're going to receive in the future. So I really feel that, as Kirsty Diggle said in her presentation, this is a fundamental change that is being proposed in the White Paper, which we really do need to be very strong in our responses. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So again, I think the board will very much encourage when the responses are redrafted, you know, to really put to the forefront our concerns, you know, of those things that you've just mentioned. So that really comes across in those responses. Councillor Willis, are you wanting to speak on the Green Paper?
My question is, relates to master planning. It's not clear to me how far master planning is kept as a mechanism and the power of it. I've been very impressed with it in recent months, and particularly in relation to environmental issues, you know, so some of the issues raised by councillor Moore. But I'm not clear where that comes in the White Paper. I think I heard in one of the presentations that it will be retained, but I wasn't convinced that that would be the case. If I could have some clarity on that, please.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Porter?
Again, councillor Willis raises an excellent point in relation... Again, councillor Willis raises an excellent point in relation to the, essentially the transition between a local plan site being allocated in a development plan and a planning permission. And our local plan sets out our principles, sets out the identifies where those sites are, but then in the policy, as a statutory requirement, requires a master plan to be prepared and approved by this council before the consideration of a planning application. Now, where the white paper is talking about permissions in principle, i.e. allocations, local plan allocations receiving planning permission by some outline or an outline light, as I've heard it described by others, that effectively may well negate some of these principles that we want to embed. And I think what I'm very encouraged over the last year, well, six months or so, is actually looking at sites, looking at the context, looking at the constraints, looking at the opportunities, all of those things really come out in the master planning process. And also getting local people involved in that, in that process. Anything that detracts from that, I think is a backward step. The white paper does talk about master planning, but it's all about design codes. It's about making things standardised so effectively development can move forward more quickly. And I think we, in our responses, will strengthen with members' agreement or the aspects of our experience in Chelmsford of what we think is a successful approach. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Unless anyone disagrees with that, I'm sure we would concur with those comments. Any more questions specifically relating to the proposals on the green paper? Okay, so I don't know whether we need a formal second for these proposals or not. Do we, Mr Mayfield, or?
Chair, I don't know whether the board wishes to make a decision on the proposal put forward by councillor Goldman as amended by councillor, with councillor Whitehead's wording at this stage, or whether you want to complete the discussion on the item overall before making that decision.
Well, I thought we were just going to deal with the green paper, just the general principles in the green paper before we get down to any more specific changes that we would want to see. In terms of the general principles involved, then I think I'd like to sort of have a, you know, bring the green paper to a close before we move on.
In that case, Chair, I think unless there's any dissent, if all the members of the board are happy to accept what's proposed in the green paper as amended, as I said, you can move on to the general discussion on the, on the white paper.
Okay, I'm not seeing any dissension to that, so thank you for that. So councillor Whitehead.
Thank you, Chairman, and thanks to everybody about the amendment. I hope that was helpful. On the general principles of it, we could spend the next two or three hours going through it all and looking at amendments and so on. And I certainly feel that most members don't want to do that. As I said to the leader of council, and to councillor Goldman, and yourself, I mean, the officers, as always, have done an excellent job in preparing those. What we are likely to get sucked into is this sort of death by a thousand cuts where the government puts out a paper and we all play around with little bits of it and play around with the responses and talk about neighbourhood plans or whatever it happens to be, and get away from the main subject. And the main subject is actually entirely missing from the government's proposals is how do we get more houses built? Because it doesn't actually come up with any brilliant ideas of how to do it. It tinkers with how many we build in Brentwood or how many we'll build in Chelmsford and so on, and what the style should be like. It's all very fascinating, but actually, as we all know, councils don't build houses. It encourages house builders. Digress slightly on the question of unbuilt planning permissions and particularly master plans. Beare is a good example where we deliberately stop them building houses because we want them to build the infrastructure in line with the number of houses built. So the unbuilt houses are controlled by this council under section 106. And that's a good thing, it's not a bad thing. So the unbuilt ones will be built according to what we've asked as opposed to what the builders want. But otherwise, there is huge amount of dissent amongst lots of members of parliament about all of this white paper. I mean, I've been speaking to some of them. I've been on webinars with the housing minister. I was on one yesterday, wherever his name is, Keith Hall, and so on. And none of them got a faint idea what they're talking about, really. It's depressing that they don't know how to really solve the problem. So if we're not careful, I mean, certainly we should respond and all the stuff on the green sheet, yes, is fine. But where is the meat in all of this sandwich, really? It's like walking around a house and saying, oh, I don't really like the wallpaper here or the kitchen needs changing, but forgetting it's next to the slag heap and not actually sort of doing something about it. And so we have to make sure that what we're doing when we respond, and as you know, we're seeing our members of parliament tomorrow. And from that point of view, we need to get over to them, the disquiet of this council and all the other councils, about the real lack of change. Because if we tinker with the white, sorry, all of the planning rules, again, I mean, I've been, councillor Porter's been, lots of you have been through hundreds of iterations of how to do a local plan. And every time they change it, it takes longer, not shorter, because they introduce new regulations. So they're in danger of shooting themselves in the foot on that one. But on the rest of it, there is no real sort of sandwich, meat in the sandwich. Let me just quote you a tiny bit. As you know, I have a certain interest in Germany and therefore reading papers on this subject is interesting. It says here, "Cheaper housing construction is hardly possible anymore. High land prices contribute to rising costs for housing construction and purchase, especially in growing regions and large cities," said the leader of the Greens. He called for a new and active policy for affordable housing. Sounds familiar? Yes, amazing, really. It is exactly the same as everywhere else. And the similar sorts of notes in there. Building land in Germany is more expensive than ever. Demand for living space is enormous. And so it goes on and quotes all sorts of figures. And the big cities inevitably have the biggest problems. The lowest increase between 2009 and 2019 in Germany is, it was 97% in Düsseldorf and 178% in Munich. In London, it was 66%. The government hasn't met its building targets at all. They're not on track to build new ones and prices will rise. So what we're seeing is the same problem here as we see in Germany. Now, everybody always tells me the Germans don't own their own houses. Well, that's not true. The housing rate in, it's a question, if we all could raise our hands and put a piece of paper up there, I would test you on it, but the answer is 51.5% of Germans own their own houses, which is much higher than people ever believe. It's 65% in the UK now. And from my experience of going out there, they're building the same little rabbit hatches that we complain about here, which is not what they used to do, but they've been set targets and are building rabbit hatches. Again, the same situation. So in all aspects, this white paper doesn't cover the really important things. And we need to get that message across as well. Certainly, we must respond to the points in it, and as I say, that's fine. But what you're actually doing, of course, in particular with SIL, will be a disaster, as Jeremy said earlier on. If you look up land prices, look up house prices in Sunderland, I picked it at random, a new three bedroom house up there is £120,000. Wow, can you beat, yeah. One in Chelmsford is £320,000. They build them the same way, with the same sort of bricks and things. So there's a £200,000 land difference, which of course is what it's all about. If you had a standard SIL payment of, I don't know, £20,000 as we have, as a proportion of £120,000, that's enormous. As a proportion of £120,000, well, it's being paid as we see. So we need to stress that they need to have one, if they're going to have one, I don't agree they should, as a percentage, of course, and not as a fixed sum, because that would stop the thing dead in its tracks. And the sort of local government situation is one where infrastructure, you're right, is something that the government should be paying for. We should say that, why don't we? And from all of those points, we are lobbying our MPs already, don't think we don't. I am writing foolishly a paper on this subject because one of our MPs, I won't mention which one, asked me to do so. And so I think they're becoming aware of it. And I know members here have all been involved with local plans in many cases. And the Chelmsford one, naturally, we would say this, is the best one there is, but it does show all the right characteristics of a local plan. It does have serial payments, it has control payments on section 106 and so on. So I think what we need to do is to respond now, hopefully not going through pages and pages of them, but also to look in more detail of what it is that we can do to solve the situation. I did see Kemi Badnatch, one other MP who's not with us tomorrow, last week on a webinar. And she asked me the question, what would you do? And really, I'm stumped for words, but the answer is, I hadn't come up with a master plan at that stage. Because if I'm saying, and we're saying, this isn't adequate, the answer is, what will build more houses in a way that's politically acceptable? Because in the end, politics and planning are the same thing. We've all been to planning meetings with those crowds banging at the back. As soon as you want to build a house, they're all there. It doesn't suggest how we overcome any of that. And, you know, you've seen it and we've all seen it really in certain sites. So that we have to try to persuade the government to actually tackle the real problem and not tinker, because all of this is tinkering. And until we actually solve it, doubling our number of houses won't solve the country's housing problem. So we have to find a way, if we can, of getting that message through. So I'm trying to reinforce in a circular way what was in the green paper, because it's right that we should do that. And I can ask members when they're responding to say, how will this actually achieve what you want? Because they seem to have got on a train but not actually worked out where it's going. And until they've worked out where it's going, they will not achieve what they want. So our group, unless one or two of them wants to say something particularly complicated on any particular point, are not going to spend all evening going through the points. And hopefully, we can put it forward unanimously, which I think we can. Sorry to go on at some length, but it's a very important paper. And there are lots and lots of things hidden in it that if we're not careful, we'll miss the main point. So don't forget the main point. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. And yes, I'm sure the board would agree that we really want the responses to really push for the concerns that we have, you know, and really make that clear to government. Okay, so thinking back to what we've heard so far, does anybody have any specific points they wish to raise for any of the responses that have been distributed to us? Are we content in general terms with those or is there anything that specifically someone wants to raise? No? Okay, councillor Sochin, you haven't put anything in the chat box. I'm assuming you're content with what's been said.
Yes, I'm content if the, the comments I've made are circulated to the director and then the planning officers and the community and the cabinet member. And I'm happy to share that with the opposition spokesman or the opposition people to see. They may be critical of them and I'm very happy to have critical comments as well. Thank you.
Well, I think councillor Sochin, we do need to air those now. I don't want to go into specifics, but if you could sort of talk in terms of generalities, because obviously, once we finish tonight's meeting, then we can't go back, we can't revisit it. So is there something, just in general terms, you'd like to say about any of your concerns?
The, thank you, Chair. I mean, my concerns are the emphasis on simplification and efficiency mentioned by officers to us as compared with community involvement. And I know, as councillor Whitehead said, that people come time and time again making representations when there's nothing can be done, the plan is too far advanced and so on. But I really feel very strongly about community involvement. So those are the comments. They're there to look at. I'd like those comments to be shared so somebody, people can look at them outside of the meeting. And they are put on the table without being formal recommendations. And as various people said, they don't want to discuss them in detail. So I'll leave it at that, Chairman.
Okay, are members content with that response from councillor Sochin? Anyone object? Okay, thank you. So councillor McCrory.
Thank you very much, Chairman. First of all, I think it would be appropriate for me also to thank our officers for this very comprehensive report and the detailed responses. When you think that this consultation came during beginning of August, during the holiday period, and they've had to cope with this over and above their existing workload as well as people being away. So I'd like to thank them very much for all the work that's been done. I know it's been mentioned, but it's worth mentioning again from me. So very much welcome the views of the board and the recommendations on the green sheet, which we've already discussed. And also the point made by councillor Whitehead is very helpful and I'm sure that that can be taken forward. I think the form of words doesn't really need any further discussion, so thank you for that. I do pick up the feeling of the board that there needs to be, let's say, a stronger response. I do quite understand that as officers, they do need to be strictly impartial and non-political and stick to the technical detail as professionals, and that's absolutely fine. But it's our job to actually put any additional comments from a political perspective that we want to. And I think there's been some very useful comments made this evening, which I'm sure we can work into our response. I mean, obviously, this, this is a consultation and the questions are framed in such a way. So we need to weave in our response on the particular points that have been raised this evening in the appropriate questions as best we can. But nevertheless, I think it's been a very useful exercise this evening. And so I thank all the contributions from members on all sides. And in the next few days, we'll get together with the officers and we'll come up with the final response, which we need to get off to government in not too distant future. So thank you very much, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's okay then. We move on to agenda item six. Again, another response, this time about the main modifications to the North Essex Authority's joint section one local plan. Mr Potter, it's back to you.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I'm going to ask Laura Percy, who's a senior planning officer in the planning policy team, just to provide a very short contextual presentation for you. No slides, just a bit of context for you ahead of consideration by the board. So thank you, Laura.
Good evening. The item is a proposed consultation response to the North Essex Authority's joint local plan. The three authorities of Colchester, Braintree and Tendring have been working on a joint plan, which they submitted for examination in 2017. The plan was to include three new large garden communities across the three authorities. include three new large garden communities across the three authorities, which would largely meet their joint housing needs. Each authority will then have a part two plan of their own, which will make up the residual housing needs for each authority. The examination of this joint plan paused in 2018, as the inspector was concerned over the deliverability of these three large sites, and required some further work to be undertaken. As a result of this additional work, the inspector concluded that two of the three sites, they didn't think they were going to be deliverable in their current form, and should be removed from the plan. So the removal of these sites is the content of this consultation, and it's the inspector's modifications consultation. So the proposed development in this section one plan, as it remains, we feel has limited impact on Chelmsford, as the remaining site lies on the Colchester-Tendring borders, and Chelmsford has not previously raised concerns about this development location itself. As this consultation is only concerned with the modifications, and not an opportunity to raise new issues or repeat any previous objections, it's not considered necessary to raise any concerns in respect of the site and principles which are, which remain in the section one plan. However, as a result of the removal of two large sites, there is concern how the three authorities are going to meet their housing requirements in full. And until such time as each authority's part two plans are published for consultation, it's unknown if they will indeed each be able to meet their needs. However, there is a level of commitment within this section one plan to meet each authority's housing needs in full. And essentially, we'll have to wait till further consultations for each of their part two plans to assess any implications for Chelmsford, which may arise from either identified locations of growth in those plans, and also if each authority will indeed meet their housing needs. So the proposed response is attached to appendix one, and it's been drafted on this basis. And if agreed by the board, will be submitted by the 9th of October, which is the consultation deadline. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments from members? Councillor Sochin?
I'd like to propose acceptance of the report, which I think is fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments for agenda item six? Okay, so the board notes that report, and we thank the officer for it. Item seven is the work programme. Mr. Mayfield, is that for you?
Not specifically, Chair, but it's simply for the board to note the items that are coming up for its meetings for the remainder of this municipal year. I think any comments or questions on those are best addressed to the planning officers concerned.
Okay, councillor Porter?
Thank you, Chairman. Relating to the agenda for the meeting on the 5th November, where we had consideration possibly of the master plan for land north of South Woodhamferres. I have recently discovered that there could be a health issue with the roads, the B1418 through Woodhamferres village. And I quote from the council's senior scientific officer, the location is a street canyon, which is likely to severely reduce dispersion, and there is a moderate gradient which increases pollution. My point, Mr. Chairman, is that these matters need to be given full consideration, and that to bring this matter before the November meeting is probably premature, and it could best be dealt with in the January meeting. I'd ask that be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Porter?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, councillor Porter. I think at this point in time, I think what I'd like to do is to assess where we are with the South Woodhamferres master plan. I think rightly said, we will need to, the developer and Essex County Council was highways authority, will need to fully take into account any matters in relation to increased traffic, increased usage of the road that comes through Woodhamferres. And councillor Porter is right, it comes up the hill there, it's narrow, not dissimilar to Danbury, where an AQMA has been recently declared in Danbury. I wish for that officers that are dealing with the master plan and the county council are fully briefed on that issue. And rather than me saying tonight, that therefore means that it needs to go to a later committee, I think we need to ensure that those issues are assessed, and then we determine, you know, what appropriate date where we feel happy for that committee to come back to. So I think in short, we can take on board councillor Porter's concerns, and refer to the people and the authorities involved in relation to determining those factors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Chairman. Just recently, we've commented on the environmental impact assessment provided by Bellway Homes, who's proposing to develop part of the site, north of South Woodhamferres, known as SG10. And it would appear that they've now gone up from 250 houses to 350 houses. And I understand from other colleagues, and councillor Massey made a comment on Monday at the meeting about the county council's comments, is that the whole site is now going to be 1,600 houses, including the Bellway part. Now, that is, as I said on Monday, it's a long way from the, near around 1,000. And I wonder whether we need more time before we start looking at master plans, and would agree that possibly moving into the meeting after November might be, we might be able to get to the bottom of what this all means to us. So just to comment here, I think it's a bit early, and 1,600 houses will certainly need a lot more infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Porter?
Thank you. Well, I mean, I'll probably refer you to the answer I gave a few moments ago, but to councillor Porter. I think we will need to look at, you know, what's coming forwards. We won't be bringing a master plan before the board until officers are content that we have all the information, you know, available to us and available to you to make your decision. Rather than me saying tonight that, what date that is, I think I'd rather the process continue. And if we are in a position to bring it to November, we will do. And if we're not, you know, it will get deferred over to the next meeting. So we've heard, you know, both councillor Porter and councillor Roberts' concerns, and as I said, relay those to the officers involved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I hope that satisfies you. Okay, any other points to be made about the work programme? Okay, item eight then. Any urgent business, Mr. Mayfield?
No urgent business, Chair.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for coming along tonight, particularly those watching from home. You're interested, always appreciated. And I hope you all have a, enjoy the rest of your evening. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Chairman.
Good night.